Okay. I'd like to call the Limerick Planning Board meeting to order, May 20, 2024, 6:30. We have no scheduled hearings. Wow. Call to order, real call.
Patrick Perla, excuse, Paul Weiser. Saatchi Koenig. Carver Torrioso.
Yes.
Tom Kerrigan. Dean, Jason Perez, excuse, Dean Valier.
President.
John Siza.
Yes. Okay, minutes of previous meetings, March 18th, 2024. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion accepted.
Oh, for the minutes.
The minutes, March 18th. I have a motion made and seconded. To accept the March 18th meeting minutes. Do I have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Any additions? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. 2.2, April 1st, 2024 minutes.
I'll move to approve those.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the April 1st. Do I have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Last minute, NR for 273 and 239. Leggett Hill Road, map 425, parcel 6 and 7. Oh, Carol, okay. I'll do that one then, I don't care this one, Carol. Okay. Do I have someone representing this?
They have it in front of them, so if you have the same thing, then you can put it up for the public, um, note on the.
I didn't even notice that.
Nope.
Do we have an easel?
The easel's over here.
Easel's on this side for some reason.
It's because the TV's over there.
They have a big screen over there.
I only got the big screen behind this stuff.
No, I don't like this. I don't like it on this side. Not for me.
Yeah, they gotta move the.
You know what they should do? We have this in the home, they have this thing called L-N-O. I sent a picture to Elizabeth last week.
It's not good.
It's like an overhead projector, so you put, you put the plan underneath there and it pops up like that.
Well, tell them, yeah. Tell them what it is.
Yeah, we should be able to.
Let's start figuring.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah. Hi, board members. My name is Greg Gould. I am with Hancock Associates. Andre Isaac Land Surveying is a division of Hancock Associates. I'm presenting an NR plan for our client, Philip Ware, who's also in attendance here tonight. It's 273 and 279 Leggett Hill Road. It simply is a land swap of equal area between the two parcels to accommodate for a driveway encroachment. The lots before and after will have the required frontage under the zoning bylaws, and their lot areas will not change because of equal area swap.
We're just going to which? The purple to lot 3?
Yeah.
Purple's to. How is 279?
Yeah, the purple will be going to 279, and the orange will be going to.
You have to color.
I don't have color.
So the triangle.
Yeah, parcel A, parcel A will be going to 279. Parcel B will be going to 273.
Oh, okay.
Please note that, yeah, parcel lot 3 is a non-conforming lot, doesn't have the minimum lot size.
Correct.
But it's not.
But it's already not. Was it non-conforming?
Already non-conforming, and it's not gonna be for non-conforming.
It's the same amount.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because it's the same amount here and here, right?
Well, it's an old house.
Yeah.
That's an old.
But he's got the front, he's got the front.
He's got frontage, and they run a public way. I moved to endorse.
Second. I have a motion made and seconded to undo it. Do we have any further discussion?
Don't worry, don't worry.
This is a normal.
So I gotta put them all together?
Make a motion.
Mr. Gold.
Okay. We have a motion to do it. And seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I did for the.
May I ask? I'm Philip Ware. Can I get you to call me to come pick them up instead of the.
Sure, when you give your number this time, sorry, I haven't. Okay, well done.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Old business, we don't have any new business. Modification of site plan of US 68 Main Street, map 241, parcel 2, Golden Nozzle Cowwash. Plan board to determine whether this is a minor, major or minor modification. The minor modification, the board show review application under communications. The major modification, the board show schedule this to open public meeting on future dates. Do I have a representative here?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right there.
Good evening, board members. For the record, my name is Casey Birch. I work with Soli Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Neuer Energy Retail. We come before you tonight because we went through the DOT process. They came back with some comments regarding the site drive. They liked us to, they wanted us to reduce it to 30. We originally had it at 39. I apologize, this, just for the record, this document says 37 to 30. It's actually 39, reducing it to 30, so it's nine feet away. So, yeah, they wanted us to maintain the existing curb cut, and DOT doesn't like any commercial drive over 30. So what it did, this is the previously approved plan, up there is a new site plan. So we had a 16, 11, and a 10. 16 access and a 2 egress, one going straight in the right and a separate left. DOT wanted us to remove the two lanes internal to the site and just have a full movement egress, so we have a 16 and a 14 egress. And the second modification is we've been dealing with the utility provider, and there's a concrete pad for the transformer that we have to put for the EV charging stations that were, that were proposed. So that's up in this corner here, I mean, this, right here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a six by six pad for the transformer.
So that now there's no separate left turn going out of the site.
Correct.
To Main Street, just, you know.
Oh, they will. Oh, they will.
Oh, yeah, no, no, the light will still light there.
It's all I see, actually. The light was working the other day.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I came down, down Main Street and look, there's an arrow to take a left. It's a.
It's a Miami.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're still, this is the old gas station, but we have still a light in front.
It's right at the exit.
Right at Main Street.
You're not adding a light, it's already there.
It's already there. They did it when they redid all of Route 12. So they do something.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a ways down the.
No, it's right there. No, it's right across.
It's right across from the entrance.
It's where the old gas station was.
I know, but I don't.
It's right across the entrance to go along Big.
That's me, same lights.
I know they address this in the package.
There's a light right there.
Can you go through the fire department?
Yeah, sure.
So DOT is the one that wanted.
They changed.
Yeah. Their, their minimum commercial driveway is 30. Sometimes they'll let you get away with more if, if the internal requires it, but they looked at a traffic report, they said this isn't gonna back up as much, so you can easily just have a one lane and keep it at the 30. This also kept the, the light poles that were there too, which they did not wanna touch.
Change, 'cause they just put them in.
Yeah. So we, we, we had a little pushback, but we're like, well, do we?
Are they gonna reset the light?
Um, yes, that's all part of the traffic assessment, yeah.
So again, the ladder truck.
Yeah, we provided the fire department and, I believe, the police department with all the traffic, the truck turning videos. And I believe they, everything was.
No. Yeah, truck, fatty truck, if they showed that.
Uh, they are.
Fire department's house has.
There's no divider on that 30.
No.
Right, it's one, yeah.
It's a truck, yeah.
It's just a two-youths, right?
There was just a house.
On the last page, you show the truck make a turn.
I would say this is a minor modification.
There was just, there's a housing matter. We had a complete application because there weren't original signatures on the application. And I put that from the front, I'm incomplete, and I put and highlighted that you needed to provide original signatures by tonight.
Sorry.
Because right now, we don't have original signatures, we don't have proof that, I mean, we, I'm sure you're in good faith.
Right, right.
But we have, it's something we require.
Okay.
I don't know if the board wants to make that a condition.
Well, why don't we make that a condition?
Yeah.
Okay, that by the end of the week, that you add, you know, supply original to the director.
Okay.
Updated drawings.
Apologies, but I.
So a motion.
On the application.
I make, I make a motion to determine this is a minor modification.
Second.
With a condition.
What, what's the condition?
Well, we haven't voted yet. He's, we're just saying it's a minor modification.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, first, yeah, first. So a motion made and seconded as a minor modification. Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. On the minor modification, I mean, on the condition.
Condition.
That the, the original signatures.
Original signatures are on there.
To be added to the drawing and given to the director by the end of this week.
To the application form. It's the application form itself.
Okay.
Yes, we'll do.
And the police department.
Not a docu-sign.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have any further discussion on that?
Police department also have comments if you wanna add them.
Yeah, all department had comments.
Well, it's the only one that hasn't.
What the point is.
Yeah, the MR has to be kept on, they have to be notified when it changes, security cameras have to be used when this is.
Okay. We'll add that to the, the condition. Okay, we have two conditions, the signature and from the police department. Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Was that common error?
Thank you.
Letter from Peter Niall, building commissioner, regarding proposed zoning amendment regarding Article 1, Section 2, Table of Uses, Plan Board consent request. Can you, Elizabeth goes in on this?
Um, well, this originally came before us with a different recommendation, but the original recommendation was that if it wasn't allowed in the table of uses, the planning board could approve it with a special permit. But I talked over with Peter and told him why that wasn't a very good idea, and said that, you know, if it's not allowed in the table of uses, it's just strictly not allowed, and that's assumed, but he wants to put that in writing.
His first, his first one was, was that you would in fact would drink up to the planning board, and, and I talked to Elizabeth and said, no, we can't do that, because that would assume that if something was not in an ordinance, it would come to us and it would take a condition away from the city council. In other words, the city council has that responsibility, and I use that, what we just had is the gambling is not allowed, a casino. So if we were with that condition, is that would not go to, because it's not shown in the ordinances, it would come to the planning board, not to the city council.
As a special permit, that's it.
And be a special permit, and so that kind of thing really is in the purview of the, of the city council. So we relayed that to him, and then he came back with this. I'm not sure how to handle it, because at the same time is the planner, the, all our ordinances are done in the affirmative, in other words, this is a board of permitted uses. So if you have, it has to be permitted, and I've said that for 30 years.
From the Board of Appeals.
Okay, then it would go to the Board of Appeals and not the, the planning board, and I don't think we really want that. So it doesn't make a, it's sort of a difficult one, yeah. I know what he's trying to get to, but I really don't think that's, that's the right way to do it. I think we really have to, if there's a problem, we have to address it with an ordinance or a change to the ordinances. So we do, and continue with things in the affirmative, just to say, not allowed, if it's not there, it's not allowed, well, that doesn't give, you know, anybody recourse to do it, or it would have to go to the Board of Appeals and not us. So, and that, and the ordinances, unless it's spelled out, that it goes to the Board of Appeals. So I don't know how, we can handle this one or two ways. We can refer it back to the building commissioner with some comments and say, really, if it doesn't work, oh, we can schedule a hearing and have him come in and talk to us and rewrite it. So either way.
KP Law said, I've just had the following.
We saw the attorney has a recommendation.
Yeah, the attorney's recommendation.
Yeah, there's a legal opinion in front of you.
So she's got a way to get around the whole thing.
I didn't go over that with you, yeah.
She does, that's fine, it's the same thing.
So I was doing my job for me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, you did.
She's accomplishing the same thing he wants to, just with proper language, and she says it's common in zoning ordinances, so.
Okay.
So she's got a recommendation on the.
But I think as it stands, it's assumed that if it's not in the table of uses.
It's prohibited.
It's prohibited, but this just adds in another line.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we have to have a hearing.
We have to have a hearing. I don't know, I'd almost say if we're gonna have it do this, our budget for the advertising is getting kinda low. I'd like to group this with something else, so that we can do one notice and put it all together.
Fine, that's.
Um, wait till we have something else.
It's been like that the whole time I've been here, 36 years, so.
I mean, I'm just saying to save money.
So I make, I'll make a.
Because it's not.
Well, I mean, how do we make a motion on that?
Why can't a motion?
The fiscal year's coming to an end, so you're not gonna.
This is communication.
How long can you save it?
Did you ever do?
You're budgeting. I mean, if we're running low on the budget.
79 is our numbers. I know, I know we're really low.
She would have to petition the city council, and then it would come back to us for referral, then we schedule a public hearing, which is gonna put us after fiscal 24-year budgets, we'll already be in a new budget.
So then we may as well sketch, we may move it forward.
So you're saying have Peter send it to the city council as a petition, whether, rather than have a board, planning board have a petition, or have, yeah.
Well, normally, in the past, the previous directors would, Peter would come and like give a recommendation, and you would petition the city council on the planning board's behalf.
Yeah.
Sounds true.
Yeah.
But Peter can do it directly, but I don't know how you.
Or well.
He's never done that before?
No.
He comes.
As I understand, the ordinance is that the planning board can submit an ordinance, and he, and then the city, the city council can, and then anybody else has to get 10 signatures.
So John, we have language from the attorney. Why don't we have Elizabeth submitted on our behalf and let the court.
Yeah, let it run.
So I would make the, a motion that we, the board authorized Elizabeth to submit on our behalf to the city council the language recommended by her.
Second, language to add to the ordinance.
By Amy Quessel.
Any use not listed in the underlying table of district.
And, you know, CC Peter wrote it too, so he knows, he knows. You get a copy of the letter?
Yeah, I, no, he hasn't gotten the legal thing.
So just let him know, you know, what, what KP Law said, you don't have to quote the, you can just quote the usual and say, this is what was recommended by our attorneys, and the reason why, you know, it's all right there.
Does that address your concerns, John?
Yeah. It's right there.
Or does that still give you the same issue?
No.
No, it doesn't. All it does is tell you out loud again that it's not a permitted use if it's allowed.
That would mean then it would bypass us if someone had.
Well, no, we would still submit it, see, the vehicle thing to the city council, is that we would submit it to the.
But assuming it's adopted, doesn't create the same problem you were just concerned about?
No.
Well.
Shouldn't, according to what council said.
See, I agree with what John says, but if Amy's saying that this is common in other ordinances, but far be it from me to disagree with her, so, because nothing is ever not allowed.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, see, we don't, everything is.
Nothing is ever not prohibited, but if she's saying it's done and no one has challenged it or.
Common phrase is her language.
Then, right, then fine.
See, that's why, you know, it's sort of, it's a misnomer right now, is, but if the city solicitor says it's okay.
Yeah, I agree.
It's fine.
So I second John, uh, Paul's.
So the motion would be to submit that to the city council, the planning board to submit to the city council on behalf of the.
Building inspector.
The building commissioner. Okay? In the proper format?
No.
Okay. I have a motion made and I have a second.
Get the information with Peter also.
And any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Montruset Regional Planning Commission, representative of board to make an appointment for a representative for the July 2024, June 30th, 2025 term. Do I have a?
Who's doing it?
Dean was gonna do that.
You did it two in a row, right?
Two of the tears?
Yeah, we told you twice.
You're an expert. I heard you said, I love doing meetings.
I just took one step backwards. No, I'll do it again, that's fine.
Okay.
I can't make all the meetings, but.
That's okay.
He's always sending useful stuff forward to me, so.
Yep.
He's doing a good job of relaying.
Therefore, I would take and make a motion.
You put it down.
I'll make that motion.
Nominate, okay?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, nominate the invalid for that term of.
Do we have to do that two times, two meetings?
Yeah, we have to put it on two more agendas.
Okay. Any discussion? Here and now, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
You're gonna do it three times?
We have to do it today, and then we have to put his name on it twice.
Right.
Okay. Montruset Joint Transportation Committee, Emma.
You do this one too?
JTC, representative.
No, I do this one.
Would to make an appointment for Representative Gold Lightfries. This is Trent, the first one is on the board.
Right.
This one is for transportation issues for all of.
I moved, will you reappoint Elizabeth?
Yeah, Elizabeth, you don't mind.
Yeah, I go to those, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, second.
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
It's good to keep experience in those places.
Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
It's during the workday, so I just make sure I budget my time so that I can attend a bit, so.
Director's report.
All right, I have a report.
Okay.
Um, and I, I believe that we had Luke here, who introduced himself informally, but I would introduce him formally, Luke, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
Bolak.
Bolak.
Bolak, one of the Bolak boys.
We know it's Dan.
He's here to help us with code enforcement, and you might wanna say a few words, but as my director's report, I just want you to know, one thing we're trying to do is to make sure that once the planning board approves something, the landscaping gets done appropriately and the other conditions of approval get met. We're still working with the building inspector to make sure C of Is don't get issued before things are done, but that hasn't been a smooth path for us, so we're kinda picking up, we're working behind right now, but anyway, the point is, I'm going out, I'm inspecting properties, and I'm following up when there's deficiencies. So I went to four properties recently. I can kinda go over them real quickly. I can either email the board an update with the properties and their status, or I can quickly go over, I don't know, 4042 Francis Street, they were in compliance, and their landscaping was done. That was good. 125 Lawrence Street, it was formerly, came in front of the board, it's 280 National Street. They had a site plan and a special permit. They're missing their trees, their mature trees, I think there were four to eight mature trees they had to do, but they, they have until June 1st to comply, so we'll go into them.
They did do a nice job in that piece of property.
Except their, their trees.
Except the trees.
Enterprise Rent-A-Car, 143 Mill Street was perfect. All their landscaping was done appropriately. And then 130 Pioneer Drive, the marijuana establishment, was mostly compliant. They did everything, but their, two of their trees died, didn't survive, so they need to go back and replace the trees, and I reached out to them. So we're gonna be working together on some of these.
Sounds good.
So I'm very happy you're here, and I don't know.
No, it's a good.
So what's your title now?
Code enforcement officer.
Code enforcement officer.
Yeah.
Good, we've needed one for about 30 years.
Where are you working?
Sawyer, Sawyer here. I'll be working out of here at City Hall.
Yeah.
Yep. I start, my official start date is Tuesday the 28th, but I work at DPW, I've been here for almost 10 years now.
Field, that's good.
So I don't know if you're gonna wanna do inspections with me together, and we can kind of like, I don't know how the mayor wants to do it.
Well, that's, I think that's gonna be the big question, is, is going over things with him, going over things with Jen Reddington, as well as myself, and going for everybody else.
So you're, you're the guinea pig. Nobody's, you're setting the wheel here.
That's all right. Love her challenge. All right for it.
Yeah, what we can do is, we can get together in the future and show you what we do and the different types of conditions that we're looking for, and how we, you know, how we'd like to see that, so that you do have an understanding with.
Yep.
What the board communicate, so we can set that up in the future.
Sounds good to me.
No problems with that. Good.
Yep, I look forward, it should be a good time, and.
Yeah, you're gonna.
She doesn't have enough air yet.
So that's good.
It's all right, it's all right, yeah.
I had, I had one other update, on Sawyer Way, remember that the board worked to get the $84,000 dedicated to repairing of the road? The, in the last update, I had the DPW pay the road.
Oh, they did.
And then I checked with the DPW to see if there was any further work gonna be done, and they said they're not doing anymore, and I checked with the mayor to see if the mayor was gonna initiate any further work, and he said no. So I think the money's spent.
Did they do the safety improvements a little bit?
They didn't do the guardrail.
They didn't do the guardrail.
The guardrail's not happening, so that's, that's all that's gonna happen for Sawyer Way.
Okay. How they're gonna go forward with getting that approved, is there right away, as the city?
No, it still needs some things, they're not, they're not gonna, they're, they're out of money, they're not, it's just gonna be like every other. It, it got, it got approved from where it was, but it's not, it's not across the finish line.
Yeah. Okay.
Right? That's all I have.
All right?
Oh, then there's a housing conference, June 12th and 13th. John and I are, we're hoping to get approval from the mayor to go. I turned in the form a week ago, so we're waiting to hear back, but if somebody else wants to go to housing, a conference on how to create more housing, it's in Worcester, June 12th and 13th. I need to submit to the mayor to get approval for you to go, to take it out of our budget, so I can still go, if you must register by May 28th, if somebody wants to go.
But there is a tough month.
12th and 13th.
Day of the week.
I think it's a Wednesday, Thursday, but.
Yeah, it's the 15th, it's Saturday. Yeah.
So Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay. So it's all good, no offense in that week.
Well, email me and I'll, I'll cover your reception.
Well, I'm, Sam and I got some.
And then you can tell me if you wanna register, and then I have to fill out a form, get the mayor's signature, and then it's registered.
Okay. Are you all settled?
I'm all set, that's my director's report.
I've got one, one more announcement.
From that territory.
One more announcement. This is a, hey. It was important for Paul. The winner, we have one more announcement. The Rotary, Rotary Club's calendars, that Paul was the winner this week.
Oh.
Paul is the winner?
This is the final announcement we got, none of them won.
So I'll have a check, you'll get a check in the mail.
The money.
Just thought I'd let you know.